I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phyllis, would we be able to have the roll call, please?
Yeah.
Here.
Craig Kershaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Follencamp.
Here.
Wiley Thurst.
Here.
We'll email a copy of our minutes from our January 3rd meeting. They've had a chance to review those, and if so, a motion to approve. So move. A motion from Matt to approve the minutes from January 3rd. Second. Excuse me. Were you saying something?
Yeah, but we're gonna have to, I guess we can approve that, but then we're gonna have to amend it on the appointment.
Appointment.
But...
Here we go.
Here we go.
There we go.
Okay. If you recall...
No, we haven't done the minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Are we gonna do that first or not? Are we gonna do this and then do the minutes?
Go ahead and do the minutes because that's what, that was what...
I had a motion from Matt to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Great.
Second.
I got a second. Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes?
I oppose the same.
Tim?
Okay.
Get your pen raised.
If you recall at the last meeting, the, we made known the fact that the plan commission membership was going to be revised, reorganized. When we had city engineer, we went to a nine-member plan commission because statutorily we were required to. That also brought on a park board representative. We no longer have a city engineer, and the likelihood of hiring one in the near term isn't great, so it requires us then to go back to a seven-member plan commission. In order to do that, the plan commission members have to resign, which they did, and then the plan commission members, seven individuals, would be reappointed. The problem is that the way and who appoints the nine members is different than who appoints the seven members. It's a goofy statute, but long and the short of it is, a plan commission that consists of seven members is appointed four members by the mayor and three members by the city council. And the city council is required to appoint individuals who are either elected officials, appointed officials, or employees of the city. So, in order to comply with the statute, the minutes last month showed that the mayor had made five appointments, which is not correct under the statute.
Well, Bill never did get appointed.
And Bill, Bill wasn't appointed because at that time it was thought that the Board of Works needed to make that appointment, which it is the case in a nine-member, but not a seven. So, long and the short of it is, we have five members who are properly currently appointed. But Barb needs to be appointed by council, and so does...
Butler?
Tyler. No, Tyler's already been appointed.
Bill. Bill Carba.
Yeah. So those are two additional appointments that council needs to make this evening.
And you can't do so because Bill is in an appointed position, and Barb works for the city as an employee, so...
Right. So they fulfill that criteria.
So I will make a motion to appoint Barbara Vill to plan commission.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
I oppose the same.
This is much easier than I thought it was gonna be.
Thank you.
So now we have a plan commission. We're all good to go.
We're good to go.
Okay. We need to sign or make a conflict of interest form a matter of record. Tim Allman did work in our lobby after we had water out there. He did some restoration work for us, and he's a fireman, so we have to make his conflict of interest form a matter of record.
Tim.
Wiley and Matt, a second. All in favor?
I oppose the same.
Thank you. I also this evening want to make a matter of record that I have reappointed Nate Roomschlag to the Adams County Sewer District. Nate has been serving on there, and I reappointed him effective today through December of 2019. So, have a motion to make that a matter of record? So move.
Second.
Matt and Wiley, all in favor?
I oppose the same.
Thank you. Next, Phyllis, if you're keeping up...
Yeah, I'm trying.
Is the downtown planners in downtown Decatur here. I believe, Craig, you might help me out here, I think there's 29 of them. Does that sound right?
Yes. Twenty-seven located in the downtown area.
Okay, 27 located in downtown area, and they are looking for, the Chamber is looking for sponsors at $110 per planter that would sponsor the planter for the entire season. And in addition to that, then they are also looking for places to adopt a planter. In other words, if a planter's out in front of your business, that you would adopt it and you would agree to give it some nutrition and weed it and whatever.
Water and weed.
Yep, water and weed. Craig's been hitting merchants up. How's that going?
It's going very well, thank you.
Yeah.
And if you don't mind, I'd like to make a matter of record that I will, this will be a conflict of interest because I am the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. I will not be able to approve.
Right. However, I would like you to speak on behalf of all this as to...
What's inspired?
Mm-hmm.
All right. We discussed, I went around to, in fact, a couple Fridays in Moncton, I found out that the Chamber was in charge of flowerpots, or at least the financial end of the flowerpots. I want to say thank you very much to Pastor Dan York for running this program in the last 25 years. He's done a fantastic job. The flowerpots have been wonderful, and he has taken that project on. Now that we have a new executive director, I went around and talked to the people in the local downtown area. We had a difficult time with donations covering the actual flowerpots, so we're gonna go a different route this year. I've asked about 15 of the people in the time period that I had to adopt these pots, and then also I'm looking for sponsors to actually sponsor. We sent out stuff on the newsletter and to our webpage and Facebook page, social media, to our Chamber members to pick up the slack, and we've received a lot of positive feedback on that. We're addressing now under committee to see if we want to label the plaques, or, excuse me, the pots with the sponsors, decals or something like that. It's all kind of under consideration at this time. The three criteria we made were that we are going to buy from, we're gonna take bids from Chamber members locally. We're going to try to, with the encouragement of downtown business, try to keep them uniform and the same, meaning they're all gonna be the same type of flowers, and the third thing was we're gonna stay on or under budget. And that's the consideration we had to make, so...
Which had not been being done in years past.
And it's been a difficult thing in the past, so... I'm not gonna say anything negative about anybody. We want to definitely give kudos and thanks to Pastor Dan York and the people that did the voluntary work, because they've done a beautiful job in the past. Thank you.
So, the question posed this evening is we've been invited to sponsor a downtown planner or more, if we so choose, at $110 annual fee. And everyone's, I think, probably in agreement that every year the planners, those look really nice, it does add a nice little touch downtown. Long-term, if we ever do streetscaping out there, they may go bye-bye. I don't know, but they are here for at least another year, maybe longer, most likely longer. So having said that, any discussion? Do we think the... Phyllis, where would we pay for something like this from?
Promotional.
Promotional.
Council.
Council's promotional. Do we have the funds to do more than one sponsorship? Probably.
How many do I have sponsored so far? Fifteen of 27. Yeah, and why don't we just put, make it one at this time, my suggestion, and if I need to desperately down the road, I will come back and ask for more.
Appreciate that.
Main Street has done one. We agreed with the option, maybe doing a second if it was absolutely needed.
Okay. So could I get a motion to sponsor one downtown planner? So move. Matt, and second?
Second.
Second from Cam. All in favor?
All right.
I oppose the same. And as for the adopt the planner, Craig, are we, you want us to do that?
It's basically, I'm getting designs from local merchants, local Chamber members, and we'll write out a procedure on watering, fertilization and stuff, and we'll give you the materials. We're asking that the storefronts would actually adopt a pot, basically, or, excuse me, adopt a pot or a planter and actually take a look at it about three times a week and water it.
Is there one in front of City Hall, or, I don't even know? Yeah. There's one in front of City Hall.
We move them around. It's our sponsorships.
Okay.
We just move them early in the mornings. Dan will always contact us, and we would move them like 6:00, 6:30 in the morning in front of the businesses that sponsor them.
Well, if you need sponsors, I think between the staff here at City Hall, we could muster up...
You mean adopters?
Adopters, yes.
Thank you. We'll keep it, we'll keep it...
So yeah, just kinda keep it in the loop on that, if you need to start.
Basically, we're gonna ask a group of people when it comes time to plant, to go out and lay out the design and show them how to plant the plants, and we'll get volunteers to plant them, and then some of them just watch, watch them, water them, and let us know if there's any damage.
Yeah. But the intent is you're gonna have a uniform look throughout the city.
That's our goal, yes, just to have a uniform look. And stately.
Yes. Well, thanks, Craig. That's a good job. I like that.
Well, it was a new one.
Yeah, it was a new one. Okay, next, I need, I need to make mention that on the St. Mary's Nature Preserve, we are, will be having a, we got notified by the DNR that there will be a public hearing on the moving forward of the nature preserve. The public hearing will be held February 8th, beginning at 5:00 PM local time, at the Riverside Center, 231 East Monroe Street in Decatur. The hearing is basically for them to just cover the scope of the work that's gonna be done, the efficiency and capacity of the floodway, the safety of life or property. These are the only things that can be discussed. Fish, wildlife, or botanical resources, and the cumulative effects of those above items. Only issues that are directly related to this application for construction and a floodway will be addressed. Under the permitted statutes, the department has no authority in zoning, local drainage, construction outside the floodway, burning, et cetera. So, you know, there may be a big crowd there, there may be only a few people there, there may be a couple people there opposed to it. Who knows? I don't know. But if, you could mark your calendars and possibly attend that evening, it's again February 8th at 5:00 PM at Riverside Center. Next, let's talk about the Hometown Collaboration Initiative. Melissa, come on up. We had put out the plea, I think here about a week and a half ago, that our survey for the Hometown Collaboration Initiative went live, and right off the get-go first day or so, we had about 286 surveys complete. Since then, it's slowed down a bit.
As of this afternoon, we have 460 surveys complete.
And we have until January 30th, so we've only got less than two weeks.
We would all like to hit that thousand mark, for sure.
Yeah, we really wanna hit a thousand.
The link is on the city's website, the link is on the city's Facebook page. Anyone who would like to fill out a paper copy, we have those here at Riverside Center and at the library. This is your chance to let everybody know your thoughts about what's going on in the city, as well as there's one open-ended question that you can kind of share with us, your wish list for what you'd like to see happen. So, please fill out the survey and please share with your friends to...
Yeah, I'd almost, I would just almost back up on the second part of that. Not only fill it out, ask your spouse, ask your adult children, ask your friends, your neighbors, and don't just ask them, follow up and see if they did it, and encourage them to do so. So, and then after the survey is complete, we then will have another meeting, and we'll be setting up for a forum, a community-wide forum, where we would ask for the general public to attend. That's set up right now for February 15th at Riverside Center with a snow date, if it would be, or whatever, weather restricted date for a week later, the 22nd if need be. What time does that start?
5:30.
5:30. And all the data from the survey, they'll go over all that data, and then they'll give, they'll break us into groups, which is kind of how they've been doing this whole HCI project. And each group will get a discuss and talk about, and ultimately come up with a, not that evening, but ultimately, our community will come up with a project. And the project would be something either related to leadership or volunteerism, economy, or place-making, which would be more like quality of life issues, okay? And this is a community project. It's not something the city's gonna decide to do. This is something truly the city itself, the members of the community will be involved in making that decision. So, people say they want to volunteer. We hope they can take the survey and attend the meeting on the 15th. Anything else on that? Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the radio station WZBD, and also the Decatur Daily Democrat for being very positive and informative about the HCI program.
Yep.
They've gone above and beyond the call, but...
There's an article on the front page tonight about the...
So we want to say a special thanks to our radio station and local newspaper.
So pass the word, everyone. Next is, I would like to briefly discuss the Madison Street project and a contract with JPR for their services to do the plan work. We discussed this briefly in the Board of Works meeting, and due to costs, we're gonna limit it to just the one block of Madison Street between First and Second Streets and all the scope of work that JPR would do within there. Their services would be a total of $52,500 plus another 7,000, uh, up to $52,500, not to exceed, and then another lump sum of $7,500 for construction administration services during the construction period. So the total basically is $60,000. Any discussion as to JPR or their work? We've used them in the past. They're doing our plan for our streetscape out here on Monroe Street. They're doing plan work for the riverfront development. Kevin McCory's a, become quite a regular fixture around here almost.
Well, they do have an understanding of what's happening in the direction.
Working with us for a couple of years and...
Yes.
Yes, Craig.
I think that they're a great outfit. I think they're really good. I think that there's some question about, I mean, if I take a look at the whole picture and don't...
Yep, but that, those numbers you're looking at are strictly from the design firm's thrown-out estimate. It's not...
Right. My only, my only discussion that I wanted to bring up was, is this gonna be, basically they took what we did and added 10% to the cost, is what Tyler and I are looking at, I think. Is that correct, Tyler?
Basically, I guess what Craig's trying to say, and I got the same feeling too, is we have this not-to-exceed price, and we're gonna walk into a contract with him, and basically what he's charging us is 10% of the project. Say the project is down 10%, 15%, if we change some things...
Will it reflect it?
Will it reflect it? I don't know if I want to be stuck paying the full 10% on the original number, is what he's quoting us.
Are you saying that you want to tie it to a percent of the total cost of the project not to exceed that figure?
Well, I assume that's what he's doing now.
Right.
Okay? And if we change parts of the project...
And lower the cost, lower the cost, are you still gonna get charged the full?
The full price.
Right.
And I guess we're gonna walk into, my concern is, I know we're trying to get a hold of some grant money, but how soon do we want to walk into a contract with him if we don't know if we can necessarily afford it or what the cost is gonna be? See what I'm saying? I think we're getting ahead of the gun. I know he wants to get involved, and he's already been involved, so in the same token, you can't really go anywhere else. But if it's directly correlated with the cost... I mean, I know it throws a wrench in plans, 'cause...
Well, that's why we have the discussion.
We're trying to get a cost-saving on the project.
I'm not familiar with doing a project of this size myself in the past. Melissa has been, and she, in reviewing this, thought, and I think Jeremy also, thought that that was a very fair number. And again, it's not to exceed, so I would have to think that yes, Tyler, if we...
If we scale it back.
If we scale it back, I would imagine is...
Well, but what you're saying is there's nothing that requires him to...
Right. He has no hourly price in here.
Other than, I do ask the CEO and the engineers and the crew back in here, I saw that.
Attachment, dude.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess my question is, you say you're having a meeting with them...
Thursday.
Thursday. I mean, me personally, I would like to, I would like to continue to move on with this project, and if you agree with me, Tyler, I'd, then, then be fine. If we were, have, have an opportunity to discuss that with our, the engineering firm prior to signing this contract, I'm for that engineering firm doing the work. With this an opportunity for clarity, for example, mobility, if the city does a lot of the actual, for example, sign removal, pavement removal, sidewalk and concrete removal, curb removal, storm structure removal, pipe removal, coal chute removal, and light pole and foundation removal. Say, let's say we take those things on. With that in mind, would this engineering fee remove those costs at 10% out of the cost? In my opinion, if they would, what we would do as a, as a in-kind services to our own department, if he was, if he was able to remove the fees for the work that we would do, I would be in agreement with, with moving on with this engineering.
That doesn't change the scope of his work. Just because we do it in-house, the money does not change the scope of what they have to do.
JPR is not gonna be the engineer on this.
This isn't doing that work.
No. He would be the architect and planner for the project, not the engineer.
Well, I think this price includes engineering price, doesn't it, or not?
He would prepare all the projects, all the documents.
Is he gonna see the project from start to finish?
Yes. On the top of the second page...
That's the $7,500.
...he highlighted the $7,500. If he could see the project from start to finish, monitor construction, take care of chain orders...
Well, we could look for a motion possibly pending our meeting with him Thursday and having discussion with him.
Where did this number come from? Is it under here? Is that from that document?
This paper here. This is the original one that I turned in with the...
Okra.
Okra grant.
Yeah, that was the Okra grant numbers, and that included the wraparound area. He said from that, go to the bottom of it to take 10% off and...
So that included the wraparound?
Yeah.
So I understand where you come up with 10%, but that's based on what you saw here?
It's based on him saying it's gonna cost $600,000. He's charging it.
He didn't say...
He didn't say that?
No.
I mean, it's just a reflection of what it was on that paper, too. If you go back to the last page, what he was gonna charge for, he's mathematically...
It's 10% when you combine the $7,500 and the $52,000.
I mean, that's not what he's saying, but that's where they're coming up with the number.
It looks like.
There is some discrepancies on that paperwork. If I, Tyler, already pointed out, it's a storm sewer. You know, there's a substantial amount of money in there for storm sewer. I'm sure that some of those rates are settlements, storm sewer, and such, so, you know, we would definitely need to question that amount also.
I mean, I guess he does have his hourly rate on here, so I assume he's fitting it by the hour.
I guess the question is, do we need to make a decision on this tonight, or can we have the meeting with him and answer some of these questions, and then, or is it, would it be too late to table?
Well, as we talked, also earlier, as far as moving forward with the, when we were talking about patronicity discussion we had in the Board of Works meeting and the regional partnership thing, the sooner we get our ducks in a row with this, the sooner we can move forward with all the other possible funding sources. And we can, our, our goal as far as the regional cities would be to have our ducks in a row and have Melissa have it written and submitted the 1st of March.
If, in fact, the project actually costs that much, $600,000, and therefore it costs $60,000 on 10%, are we okay with the $60,000 contract? That would be question one. And I think we could still do that with the contingency stating, because the other part of that is, all right, so we're looking at phase one, but what if later we find because we changed pavers to stone concrete, that we have the ability to go, you know, can we tack on? You know, what would the additional cost be for him to, to plan that later? So that's kind of, that's the second question. But I, I mean, I think it's fair to say, hey, listen, we, we gotta see how you're coming up with that, because if it's not to exceed, that kind of leaves it open-ended.
And if it's $500,000, we don't want to pay 60. We want to pay 50. If he's based on a percentage.
Well, I don't think we can use that rationale, really.
No, yeah, because you're, you're paying him for service. I think if you say not to exceed, you're signing in for it.
For the service he says he's doing right here.
For that price.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's why he said not to exceed to us other day, because he says, "I'm sure that my services may actually be lower, depending on what you actually decide to do." Because he said this was all based on the grant, the Okra grant, and he said, "Like everything else being less," didn't he say that?
I think it's fair to clarify that with him in the meeting on Thursday and return to the council.
Is it...
I don't think two weeks is going to...
No.
You can already get the funding process rolling without...
You can get everything, you know, you can keep moving with the same intent and come back.
Okay, so let I get a motion from someone here to table the discussion on this until our next meeting, and in our meeting Thursday with Kevin, we'll approach him with all the questions that are being raised.
I think that's fair.
Yep.
So moved.
Second. Tyler and Craig making the motion, second. All in favor? I oppose the same. Also, on the Board of Works meeting, we discussed two other funding mechanisms for this, and one of, one of them was, I can't ever remember what it's called. Melissa?
Creating Places.
Creating Places. And it's C-R-E-A-T, capital I-N-G. Play on words, places. And that is a program through IHCD-A. Here it is. It's for quality of life initiatives for communities all around Indiana. Long and short of it is, is we can put in for any particular amount we want, up to $50,000, and then it would go online through a webpage for making donations from the public...
And then it would go online through a webpage for making donations from the public, much like a GoFundMe account. And we raise $50,000 online, and then IH-CDA would match it. If we said we wanted to raise $10,000, we could do that, and then they'll match to 10. But we, we are confident that we can raise 50,000. It only runs for, how many days, 40?
Between 30 and 45 days.
Yeah, it, it all happens very quickly. But I would like council's approval from Melissa to proceed with pursuing this. If it's going to make sense for us to come up with an additional $100,000 for Madison Street project, then is it worth their time to look into it?
One question?
Yep.
Um, let's say we set our goal at 50.
Yep.
And we get 60.
They're going to give us 50.
Okay. What if we set it at 30, and we get 50?
They're going to give us 30.
Okay. So we got to make, we got to match them up?
We have to, yeah. And if we don't, if we set it at 50, and we only get $49,500, they're not going to give us anything. You have to-
You have to meet or exceed the goal.
Yeah. Wabash just did this. They just finished. They're done. I mean, they've already-
They did.
I talked to their mayor today.
It was a win.
And I said, how much did you go for? He said, we did the 15. He says it was pretty easy to do.
Bob?
Bob had a question.
Yeah, Bob.
What is IH-CDA? Indiana Housing? Where did that come from?
Community Development Authority.
Got the paper on it, Melissa? Showing the spelling and stuff?
Indiana Housing-
You can have mine.
Community Development Authority.
Okay.
Bob, another Bob.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority. So if that's, if that's okay with council? Was that your recommendation? It's my recommendation that we have Melissa proceed with the pursuing of raising $100,000 total dollars through Creating Places. Okay.
We continue to learn more about it and talk through it when we're-
Right. And if, and if, and if she's good with pursuing it, then we give her the permission to do so. Okay. I'll make a motion to that effect then.
Okay, thank you. Wiley?
Second.
And Matt? All in favor?
I oppose the same.
And then the last thing that I would like council to give us permission to pursue would be funding through the regional partnership, what's the actual, Northeast Indiana Regional Partnership, on their road to $1 million, the $42 million that the state gave the 11 counties, we would like to apply for some funds to go toward this. If, if it all would work out, we could get with the amount on the $180,000 or so dollars from the partnership. And again, a lot of this is going to be hinged on Melissa's investigation, and if, and if it looks good, I would like council's permission for us to go ahead and pursue this. Very much the same thing as with the Creating Places.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Cam, and a second from Wiley. All in favor?
I oppose the same.
Thank you. I think both these initiatives are proving more and more why we needed the position that Melissa's in. I mean, we are entering, we're, we're going out, we're looking to find this money, to get the biggest bang for our buck, and I think it just should be noted that it's working.
Yep. Yep. We did have a meeting with Michael Galbraith, who is the executive director, is that what he is, of the regional cities' projects? And he did think that our Madison Street project was a very worthy project. In the scheme of things, it's a very small project. You know, they're out there handing out, you know, $3, $4 million out of crack, or more, and they would be giving us $180,000. So in the scheme of things, it's very small. But he did say it is a true example of a quality of life project, and it's the kind of project that they are wanting. So, that's all good. That's everything on the agenda. In my, in the mayor's report, I will report that today we had our first, or yesterday, I should say, we had our first progress meeting for the 224 raising project, and they've got a lot of work done here in the last week or so. All the pavement, with exception of the South Lane from the bridge to Stratton, has been removed, and it was much deeper than Greg Fleming had assumed. I think some places are 15 inches or more, right?
14 inches of asphalt and concrete on top of it.
Yeah.
Here anywhere, 20-inch thick, real late places.
Yeah.
Other places, not so much. Been quite a work in the process.
Yep. And now they're starting to put in storm sewers? Is that-
They will start on the storm sewer tomorrow morning. The storm sewer will start at St. Mary's River, more of the east, toward East Monro Bridge, and then east, and then north, I don't know, or the north side, where it's obviously removed at this point.
So if we can continue to have a mild winter, who knows? He may be able to cut some time off the project, and get this done a little early, but it's a little too soon to be calling that one in. Some of the things we discussed in our meeting, and I'm going to just kind of raise some of these things out. I've had two or three people ask me on Madison Street, as you are going toward Belmont High School, why we couldn't put a turn lane in to turn left? Because oftentimes, when it's bumper to bumper, people trying to get into school during school hour, somebody wants to turn left, and there's people coming out of North Adams, and everybody just stops and sits there. Why can't we put a turn lane in? The engineers went out and looked at that to the, this morning, to see if they could add a turn lane. It's not wide enough. So, long story short, it's not wide enough to put a turn lane in. So, they asked that, you know, if you're that car in line, and you got to make a turn, get out in the intersection so people can go around you to the right. Don't stop way back and tie up all the traffic. Semis? Greg, you got a number?
Uh, so far, I think 38 citations.
There was 38 as of yesterday morning, and I, I know Mike said that there was a couple yesterday. So we're probably up over 40 semis being cited.
Yeah, because I believe there was another, I, I leased one today.
For driving around the barricades, not necessarily into Stratton, but many of them into the Stratton subdivision. So it'll be a long time for you to get this paid for, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I've had a lot of concerns from the residents of Stratton, specifically from the residents of Harvester Lane. And we discussed that in our progress meeting. What can we do? Basically, all I can do is put a plea out to the citizens living on the east side of town, that as they come into town, if they want to use East Monroe Street, that's fine, but when you get to Aug Street, please take Aug Street, and then come up Jackson. There's a lot of people cutting through Stratton, and they're going faster than they need, should be going, on Harvester Lane. And I've had a lot of complaints from those people living on Harvester Lane. So out of respect for fellow citizens, if homeowners or drivers would just leave, I think if they left two minutes, three minutes earlier, and take the detour on Aug Street over to North Adams and Jackson Street, they'd probably still get where they want to go on time. I can't make them do that. We did discuss it, and it was mentioned that, you know, we could close off Harvester Lane at, at East Monroe Street. That would put a stop to it. But we don't want to do that. We want to keep it available for emergency personnel, and, and, you know, for those who really, if you really are running late, I understand they can cut through there, but not everybody's running late every time they come to town. Greg?
Uh, I just, I just want to make a statement, and that is, I don't know about number lost in, in-
Stratton Way.
Stratton Way. But I, I know on Harvester, and, and this has come up in several times in my career, people who are speeding through neighborhoods, I realize that most of the time, and I'm going to say at least 75, even 75, people think they are speeding, but according to the speed limit, they're not speeding. It's just that because of the short distance and the compactness of, of the streets in the neighborhoods, it just seems like they're doing faster than the speed limit. But I can almost guarantee, most of the times, I can put radar out there, and at least that percentage are not speeding. So it's, it's really hard to comprehend that they're really not going over the speed limit.
Stratton subdivision has went through many generations of families, and there are a lot of young families with small children. So, you know, the homeowners want to protect their children, and I think it's our responsibility to do the same. So, just a plea that if residents would consider taking the other detour, and not cutting through Stratton every time they come to town, would be appreciated.
Just slow down.
Yeah. Jeremy?
In the progress meeting yesterday, we also had a discussion of the timing of the traffic signals-
Thank you.
First Monroe and Second Monroe. Are making those longer, since there is no, really, there's not a lot of traffic coming from the east.
Or it shouldn't be.
There, there is a lot coming through Stratton and such, but we just kind of threw it out on the table for discussion yesterday. Heard a lot of positive feedback from the indoc this morning. I would highly anticipate probably tomorrow, they will speed those signals up a little bit, you know, speed them up, slow them down, just to try to get more traffic coming through there. Also with encouragement of trying to get the people out of Stratton, if they know that, you know, the, the green light's going to be longer-
On first and second.
As you come around, and second street, as you come around, it's not going to be as long on the way to come up through there. And also, it will hold a dismissal time, and, and beginning of the day of school traffic, so that should be happening every minute there, so.
Thanks, I forgot that part. So, is there anything else that we're kind of missing from the progress meeting, Jeremy?
No, I think so.
Okay.
I agree with you.
That's basically all I have from the mayor's report. Department heads. Dan, you got anything?
Um, just from the stormwater side, we've had kind of a weird winter so far, and we get a lot of calls about standing water, people thinking it might be a water leak, if the drains are backed up. More times than not, when people want to check it out, it's just debris on the stormwater creeks. So, if citizens could help out, and just grab the stormwater grates in front of your house, if you know there's a lot of rain coming, you know, there's thousands coming around town, it's hard for the city workers, you can help clean them all off. So if you get a chance, just kind of clean off the ones around your house, and we won't have a water stand on the streets.
Good suggestion. Thanks. Greg?
Um, just that in our, our next hire, with the interviews, I'm having trouble getting everybody in on one night, so, but I'm just about there, and I hope by the next council meeting, between an interview with us and an interview with, with you, that we should be learned of.
Good. Jeremy?
Couple of projects coming up here. Park Board's been discussing the last couple months on doing some tree carvings around the city. White cut down some trees of last year, and a little bit this winter. There's been a lot of interest in tree carving. There was some, one tree carving down behind the Riverside Center last year, last summer, that appeared to be pretty popular. Park Board identified six different locations where they would like to have some, some carvings done on, on some of these trees. Dwight had actually contacted the property owners. The individual that's doing the work is from the Fremont area. He came down today, and again, I went around and looked at the locations, and it's very exciting. I, I think that once the project is completed, that we're going to want to get some publicity, actually get people to know where they at, where they're located, and go look at them, and pick out a lot of really deep sculptures that they're going to be carving, so it's really pretty.
Is this something the Park Board's going to fund this, or?
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah, the Park Board will fund it. We're also talking about several little improvement projects, little additional improvement in Legion Park, just to kind of go on top of what Moss did a few years ago. Just some needed improvements, and a lot of little, little big scale projects. It'd be pretty exciting, yes.
Okay. Mr. Sheetz sitting in for the fire department this evening? Come on. How was your lunch today?
It was very good.
I have, I have to make a comment about that. I was invited down to the fire station for lunch today. Back when they hired Taylor Gage, the first time he cooked a meal, it was such a hit with them all, they took a picture of it and put it on Facebook, that the new guy, the new guy cooked dinner, and here's what he made. It was a real nice-looking salad with chicken breast on top, and whatever, and I made a comment on Facebook, what to take, get, get one of these meals. Well, last week, I was contacted, and said, hey, come on down for lunch on Tuesday, and I went down there today, and Mitch Baumann made, what was it, garlic chicken? Baked garlic chicken, it was excellent. Taylor Gage made fresh grilled broccoli, and, and they had some fantastic cookies, and a glass of milk. Good lunch. Ann? Bill? Melissa? Council members? Comments? Cam, welcome back to Indiana. Tim?
I do. Unfortunately, we now have a bill introduced by Senator Liz Brown-
Yes, we do.
-that is seeking to do away with the Sawways District's ability to fund its budget through property tax revenues. We thought this had been put to bed last year, when we worked with Senator Brown to-
Yeah, she worked with us last year.
Uh, worked through some issues on the bill that she introduced then. We thought that that satisfied her concerns. Were frankly perplexed why this is even needed, because if you look at how the statute currently stands, Sawways District budgets and their tax rate are ultimately controlled already by county council. So if a county does not want a Sawways District to fund its operating budget through the use of property tax revenues, county council can simply refuse to approve a tax rate. This bill basically says, by statute, the Sawways Districts will no longer be able to rely upon property tax revenues after 19, or 2018, I believe it is. The reason this is a, a big problem in, in Adams County in particular, is that currently, the Sawways District funds its operating budget through a blend of property tax revenues and gate fees. If you take away the ability to partially fund the Sawways District budget with property tax revenues, it will force raising gate fees, almost double them. And when that happens, what you're going to find is waste being thrown out wherever people think they can do so. Side ditches, if a business has a dumpster, I guarantee it will fill up, because people won't pay those rates. Okay? You'll have illegal dumping in backwoods, you'll have burning that's illegal throughout the county. It creates a nightmare for us. So, I would urge you, if you have any ability to contact Senator Brown, we'll try to get a list of the people that are sitting on the Senate committee that this bill will be referred to. If you have any contacts with any of those senators, I would, I would ask you to contact them. Do it by email, by letter, by phone call, but we need to get the message through to Senator Brown and others on this committee that potentially could pass it out for a full Senate vote. This is detrimental to the best interests of our county. So I would ask you to please do that. It's frustrating, and the Sawways District is going to be meeting next Tuesday, and this is something that we're going to discuss, and I think Wiley and Ken, who are on that board, have been made aware of this by Hank Mayer, but I'm making all of you aware that- board, have been made aware of this by Hank Mayer, but I'm making all of you aware that this is not good for our community and to the extent that you can try to make your sentiments known, that will be helpful.
Yeah, basically every resident of Decatur who pays sanitation, if our gate fees go way up, then so does all of our.
Yeah. It affects the city rates, too.
What was Liz's reasoning?
What's the motivation? Not all solid waste districts are run well like ours is.
About 35, right, you're right, Matt. And about 35 districts rely in part, some in full, on property cash revenues to fund their operating budget. But unlike most other districts, Adams County Solid Waste District actually provides services, actually has a facility that is used by county residents. That's, that's the exception to what you find elsewhere. Ours has come about because both the City of Decatur and the City of Burn still do their own waste hauling, which is beneficial to those communities for a lot of different reasons. But the bottom line is, our system has evolved because of that continued services provided by the municipalities. And you don't find that in a lot of other counties. So what works well here is something that doesn't necessarily exist elsewhere and I don't know if Senator Brown is saying there's a problem elsewhere. If that's what she's saying, then solve the problem there, don't create a problem here. But she, the frustration is that she knows. These arguments, these arguments were made to that, to her and to Senator Camley last year.
And then she made a motion to change everything last year and helped us.
Yeah.
Now this year, she's turning her back on us and.
She's not a pro.
Luke, can you?
So. Please, please contact. We've been in contact with Matt Lehman and. Is it mobbing us from the? The waste industry is very much, the waste industry is very much behind this. Do you think they would like our business?
Absolutely.
Probably. Yeah. But the cost of that would be significantly higher.
Absolutely, yeah. And if, and if something like this goes through and we have to double our sanitation fees, then we probably have to look at outsourcing it. And if we outsource it, then it's the demise of the transfer station.
And it has a ripple effect within the city itself because at that point, you lose a portion of Jeremy's workforce and the flexibility that he currently has. You lose a number of the services that currently we provide.
That's going to be the bigger impact.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you, Tim, and welcome back to Indiana to you, too.
Thank you.
Hey, Tim, question for you. I know you said get emails out and write letters. What would be the most effective way to get the most people on board with this? Is there a survey we could do? What, what, what do you think we could get the most bang for our buck on this? Because apathy and, you know, well, I'm too busy, all that kind of stuff.
I mean, if, if we can convince the powers that be in the Senate that, first of all, this isn't necessary, I'd like to see the bill killed. Alternatively, if we can at least show why we are different than other districts in a sense of what we do and why we use the funds the way we do, you know, that would be helpful because at least there may be a means of accepting us out of what she's proposing. So if we can do that, that would be helpful. But I really think, you know, last year Hank and I drafted letters that were routed around, if you recall, I think the council adopted a resolution. You know, we can do that again, but I think at this point, especially from elected officials, because this is what upsets me. According to Senator Brown last year, she claimed that her legislation was designed to promote local control. Okay, and the reason that she said that was what she was saying is that the state mandated counties to create solid waste districts through a decision of the Board of Commissioners. She wanted to give the Board of Commissioners the ability to dissolve solid waste districts since it was required by the state for them to do it. She wanted now for them to have the option to undo it. That raised a lot of issues about three people making that decision, really two people because it took a simple majority. So the bill was modified to include county council. But what she's now doing is saying she wants to take away the ability to fund the operating budget through property tax revenues, which the county council already has that ability. So why is this necessary? What's motivating this? You know, so I, it's just frustrating for me to see this happen when we felt we, not just Adams County, but other solid waste districts tried to work with her to come to a solution. If she's truly interested in local control, we already have it. So why is the state now, she's asking for the state to mandate this? You know, it's, to me, the two don't make sense.
What's the bill? Let's see what.
That's what I was trying to look up real quick.
I act's working on this.
I don't know.
We haven't heard from I act.
I act took a neutral position last year and I'm not sure why. Because I think they had other issues that they didn't want to, they wanted to see get pushed through and I think my, my sense was that they were kind of told, look, if you want this, be quiet over here. And I'm trying to find the Senate bill number.
I can forward all of you the email tomorrow that we got from, well, got several emails from Hank.
If I find it, I'll let you know here real quick.
Phyllis, do you have anything this evening? Okay, anything from the public? Nothing from the public?
I'm sorry, it's Senate Bill 465.
Okay. Seeing no more comments from public council or anyone else, do I have a motion to pay the claims? Motion to pay the claims. Well, wait a minute, I can't. Motion to pay the claim. We just went through this, Greg. A motion from Matt and a second from, what's your name, Tyler? Pay the claims, all in favor? Oppose the same? Motion to adjourn. So I get from Matt and a second from Craig, who can make a second on that. To adjourn, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Oppose the same? We are adjourned.